Taking over. But, Madam Clerk, you can go ahead with the roll.
All right, Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Ms. Frenchfield.
Okay, to start the meeting off, we had a guest who was here last week, and unfortunately, we didn't have the meeting, and I apologize that we weren't able to get the word out to everybody, but I told Kuriatnik, is that his last name, I told him he can go first.
Okay, for the record, this is going to the Ohio Ethics, so this is George Kuriatnik at the April tenth workshop meeting at the county commissioners' meeting. This is the complaint I filed against them, I received your letter back last week, that there are numerous complaints of the land bank, and this is probably top of their chart for them on this one, I'm just gonna be blunt about it. The land bank goes in, takes the taxes off foreclosed homes, gets them backed up, sells them, yada, yada, great idea, great plan, take a house for fifteen hundred, two thousand in taxes, they get that back, and win. The property I'm talking about now is fifteen eighty-one North Main Street, old Bowlin Alley, Niles Lanes, departed after fifty-one years. Tried working with the land bank for over a year, and all my notices in, my financials, everything, everything was good to go, all of a sudden they come up with somebody else that popped in behind me and no idea, didn't even want the business, they attacked him. After me explaining that the business going there is not even zoned, they shut that down. So they still wouldn't give it to me. The Bowlin Alley is on three acres, there's seven or eight acres behind it owned by Weathersfield. I contacted Weathersfield, they were vacant lots for a thousand years, they were just nothing, they were gonna give me those lots, along with fifteen eighty-one North State Street, was gonna bring the Bowlin Alley back to life, that's what the land bank, that's the purpose, bring a business back to its original, impossible, that's what we were doing. And then acres that we were getting off Weathersfield, we were gonna bring another business over there, more tax money, and now Weathersfield was gonna be able to receive money from that property that they gave us, that's where the eleven acres are all coming from. Lo and behold, nope, nope. Land bank took ninety five, how much money does, do you gotta give the land bank each year? I know you gave them seven hundred thousand, they got a grant, there's the same town, green buildings.
Well, we, we didn't demolition grants. Those were, those were brown filled demolition grants, those were.
Right, okay, did the county, you guys ask anything, if you're on, I mean, you guys are on the board, the land bank's board.
No, but we don't, we don't give them any general fund money, none.
Okay, but you're on the board, so you obviously know what's going on, obviously, I would hope so. So, the land bank took out ninety thousand in taxes, I mean, that's, that's not a little chunk of money, that's ninety thousand that this lady owned for twenty years and never paid a dollar on it, probably because she thought it worked for the courts, but, how are you, so now they sell the property to somebody else that's gonna put storage units in there. They took my plan, told him to go to Weathersfield, let them know that he wants these acres, do exactly what I was gonna do, all because, a personal vendetta with some people, people don't like me, let's get it, but, to do that, how does that happen? Just because you don't like me, you let that happen, and now this guy gets, he takes my, the land bank gave him my ideas, he went to Weathersfield, got the property, he's doing everything over there, he's tearing the building down to make storage units, that's gonna give you, what, fifteen hundred a year in taxes? Bowlin Alley and the two businesses I was bringing was gonna give you close to seven to eight, nine thousand dollars in taxes, yearly, he would've recouped those taxes, not gonna give a, a storage unit, he ain't gonna get a thousand dollars a year of taxes? The land bank says, each time I talked to Jessica and Matt, nobody was in front of you, nobody was in front of you, I went there three times, but everything was good, but they kept pushing it off, blowing it off, blowing it off. To go out and find somebody to get the property so they could say, he's a better per, he's a better person to get that property, do something with it, I mean, it's all written out, how, how does this happen? I mean, how does this happen? I bought a house through the land bank five years ago, paid the money down, gave them the check, paper signed, everything. I get a call from the neighbor, hey, I thought you bought this prop, I did, fifty-two Moynside, Jeff Crowley just said, our contractor's over here to give estimates on redoing the place, and, how's that possible, I gotta sign a contract, he said, they don't care, they're, they're getting the house. We eventually got the house, we complained about it a little bit, we, we eventually got the house, but, that's another case that that happened, and I could just see this happening over and over, that if you're not in that little clique, you're not getting it. I mean, I got a business in Niles, and I forego my taxes for twenty years, have the land bank come in and buy it, I have foreclosure, and I buy it back for a dollar, wipe the taxes out, they did that on Cedar Street, owned by the school, couple other people went back and forth, back and forth, they finally went to the land bank, they wiped out twenty-three hundred dollars in taxes, he sold the bit, the property back to Jason Martin Belli for one dollar, he made eight hundred and eight thousand dollars off that piece of property, that wiped out the taxes, and paid a dollar for it. Paper also said the land bank was giving applications out to the four houses, first application will be given out on Thursday, first come, first served, ex-council member Ryan McNulty, mother went down on a Tuesday, got her application, two days earlier, bought the first house, it's a cycle here, now, and personally, I, it is what it is, but this, this fifteen eighty-one Main Street, it's devastating, place is in my, my for fifty-one years, I had everything set, ready to go, and they put me off, put me off, always find somebody else with a stronger background, what, to tear it down for storage units, took my idea, and you guys are okay with that, I mean, you guys don't see something wrong here?
We, we serve on the land bank, but we, we have surrogates that serve for us a lot of the times.
I understand that, but.
So, so, have you been to the land bank meetings, though?
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yes, let me ask, who is Sam McCuska?
He's the treasurer of Trumbull County.
That's what I thought, does he work inside here?
Mm-hmm.
I'm embarrassed, I would be embarrassed for him to walk around like he just got out of bed with a tee-shirt on, wrinkled, to represent the county like that, was, I was appalled, my taxpayers are paying for that kind of a, that dress code, but, I tried talking, he didn't wanna hear it, two minutes in, he says, let's adjourn this meeting, everybody said, yeah, 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 boom, out they went, it was two, three weeks ago, I think, right before I talked to you, the week before that, it was third week, third Tuesday of the month, didn't wanna hear a word I had to say. Don't, does anybody see, see something here that's not right, what's going on?
Well, was there, when you say that you were skipped over for that other business, was there a stronger business model for that, I mean, was there a strong, I mean, financially, were they ready to go, and?
I, I told him, uh.
That, that all matters, you know.
Right, once everything was ready to go, I was gonna be over there within seven to ten days, put a brand new roof on it, get the deeds transferred, and we were putting a sixty by sixty pool barn on it for my tree department that was going there, we were ready to go. They then came in and said, well, this guy, I don't, he collects junk cars for a living, he's right down on one sixty-nine, right by the Dollar Store, all the junk cars and motors, sitting there, they didn't even ask, when they approved him, they didn't even ask the four neighbors, which I got letters from, which I sent to them, they, they didn't even come out and ask him and say, hey, would you care to have a junkyard next to your property? Hey, would you guys, I mean, as a land bank, don't, don't the land bank, shouldn't the land bank at least talk to the neighbors? If there's a building sitting there, you know, the bowling world, reach out to somebody in the bowling world four years ago, and they took it over and said, hey, guys, let's try to work together and bring this back to the Bowlin Alley. So, if him collecting trash cars, which five hundred and fifty thousand dollars received in a four oh one, I'll bet my house, he don't got that, he don't got that. So they waited, told another guy, probably has more money than me, but that's not the issue, I had the money, I was ready to go, I had the loans ready, everything ready to go, and I get a call, five, six days ago, man, they just screwed you, they gave us Lou Greck, Lou Gerkey, doing, uh, put storage sheds in there. Took my, they gave them my idea, how do, how do the, the land bank give somebody, another person?
When you, when you say give them your idea, you mean, for the bowling alley, or for storage?
No, they gave them the idea to go to Weathersfield, ask to get those extra lots back there.
Okay.
All he was doing is buying three lots of the Bowlin Alley.
Okay.
They told him that, and he was like, oh, that's great, now he goes there, now he's building bigger storage, how ethical is that?
And I don't wanna speak to what the land bank has voted on, it wasn't at the meeting.
No, don't, but I'm asking you, as a commissioner, how ethical is that for somebody to do that?
I mean, just hearing your side of the story, obviously, you're, you're very passionate, you have an argument here, it sounds like, but without talking to Sam and the rest of the board members, I.
And I, I, I understand that, and I'm hoping, the next, uh, the next meeting I come to and talk about this, you guys reach out, and even have them, and if, if I'm, if I'm being dishonest.
We will always invite them here, would you like to have Sam here?
Yes, I would, and my, Matt Martin.
We'll invite him, okay.
And Jessica, who was involved in the process.
We can certainly invite them here, next year.
Because, that's why it's being filmed, if in any way, I said anything, it was untruthful, it, it's, it's not, it's just unethical, it's just, it's not right.
Well, the best thing to do is get them here, and then we can discuss it openly and transparently.
I got one.
I don't know enough about, I, I don't know if they do a bid, I don't know if they do an auction, that's all new to me, this whole, I'm familiar with the demolition part, the other part, I, I don't know enough to even speak on.
And I know you guys wouldn't, but that's why I'm just bringing it here, letting you know what's going on, my stress with the ethics and everything, and also, I've been here before, and I've never seen a sheriff, sure was.
We, we have a sheriff that's assigned to us every, every meeting we have, we have two women here in every meeting, and workshop coming in.
But, the next workshop, is there any way that you guys think you'll be able to talk to them, if not, I'll wait a week or so, or come back in two weeks?
I, I think that, can we, can we invite those three individuals, Matt Martin, Jessica from TNP, and Sam, Sam McCuska, to a next workshop? We'll have them here, so.
That's next Tuesday.
We'll find, find out if they, if they can make it, I'll be over there.
I'll set bases with you guys, if you can't, that's fine, but, I knew you guys wouldn't have any answers, nothing like that, I just thought, I just want you to know what's going on, and why I was.
No, no, but we wanna get you the answers, so.
Fifty-one years I got in that property, that property should've been mine, so, thank you, and, I'll next day, everyone.
Thank you, thank you, Doctor. Does anybody else have anything of pressing matter, or other means you gotta get to, need to get to the top of the list? Sir, you're good? Okay, we'll just start on the regular agenda, then, this is for the regular meeting April tenth, dispense with the minutes of workshop, approve the bills, approve additional appropriations. Commissioner, we have budgetary explanations for all of the appropriations that are given to all three commissioners, being that Christie and Martha couldn't be, oh, Christie's here, but, you know, Martha couldn't be here today, but, they're all in writing here for us.
Okay.
And, I'm okay with just reading them and understanding them myself, if you want to go over them, now we can.
Yeah, we can go over them, yeah.
Obviously, starting from the top, stone building design would be money allocated for the HVAC for the roof.
The whole building.
The whole building, okay. Dog kennel design is, we, we've discussed that, and we've already moved on that.
And that's going in the contract today, in today's agenda, so you approve that, the fund number, the money allocated, I had Commissioner Malloy sign the papers, which I threw out the last page that you signed, because I wanted to make sure I did it again, and it's done properly, so we don't have a hiccup later down the road, so, if this passes tomorrow, have you re-sign the back of the contract and redate it, so it's current and up to date.
Gotcha. And that's what Baker Bednar?
Yes.
Okay. The various ARFA, obviously, we, we've covered those every meeting with the AWL grant, community family grant, Vaina Township, the March radios, those are something that we've moved on already, I believe, security FOBs for the court administration, does anybody wanna talk about that?
Some of my sheriff put in, we just didn't budget enough for, they need a new FOBs over there.
New FOBs?
Yeah, they placed them off, I understand it.
Okay, so those are all additional appropriations, those are new appropriations, these are all transfers from, from fund to fund, basically, so it's not new money?
It's, it's not, it's additional appropriations, those funds had room to increase the appropriations, for example, the first one, we are increasing it because of the debt that was.
Oh, no, I, I don't mean the, I don't mean those, I mean the next set, the transfers, yeah.
Oh, the first, number four.
Yes, no, 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 it's okay.
Yes, none of them fund to fund, yes.
Okay, no, no, that's all right, so, so this is no new money on the, the transfer of appropriations, we can go through some of these, if you'd like, Commissioner, if you, or if you wanna just look at them, or, um, why don't, Bob, why don't you go through these real quick, as, as a sanitary for the, for the first ones, 'cause you got a lion share of them, I guess.
Uh, Bob Meyerano, sanitary engineers, the first one, we're gonna move twenty thousand to our transfer to other funds, and we're gonna use that money to start up our Smith Stewart sewer project, in Fund four ninety-six, the seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars, that's for our final payment to utility contracting for our mineral ridge hydraulic project, the thirty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars is to remove a negative balance for our mineral ridge debt payment, we have twenty-three thousand in Fund six oh two, we are buying a new sewage pump for our Lordstown Phase Four facility, and that's twenty-three thousand, in Fund four seventy-four, that's our heat and shoot project, we had Eastgate fees pay for the eleven thousand, the eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars is Eastgate fees for our Swift Drive project, the three thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars is for our state road Phase Two Eastgate fees, the nine thousand, three hundred and forty-one is for our mineral ridge hydraulic project Eastgate fees, and the two thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars is for steer tires for our freight line, our semi down at Mosquito Creek, and some additional tools for Mosquito Creek.
Okay, cool. Planning Commission, we have anybody here, Nick, that's just a moving funds for two hundred dollars for the notary certification, who's that new employee?
That's the notary certification for Danette, she is, she's, her place, Missy is our executive assistant here.
Yes.
And she is getting her notary, and actually, I think Emily is going to be the coordinators as well, a lot of our items need notary, whether it be for the clients or for our office, so, having one in house is very efficient.
Absolutely. Sheriff's Office, anybody here from the Sheriff's Office, by chance, or on the phone, anyone from the Sheriff's Office? Christie, do we know anything about these, by chance?
The first two for this, oh, I'm sorry, the first one, the twenty-five thousand dollars in the general fund is just a transfer, they received a grant from the adult probation office, and they're just moving it from one expense account for another to pay for it, and they decided to buy. The next two were needed in Fund oh sixty-three and oh one nine, for the additional amount needed for a worker's comp premium, the five thousand dollars is just being moved in the general fund from one account to another for training purposes.
All right. Moving on to the Board of Health, again, we don't, this isn't general fund dollars, so, we have no, really authority over it, but as you can see, that purchase of a motor vehicle, and the building mortgage payment, just regular housekeeping issues for them on that, and then if you turn over to the back, we have the amended certificate of the county budget commission, Christie, wanna talk about that a little?
Yes, it's a certificate number three, DAS twenty twenty-four, it was passed by the Budget Commission on April first, they had two accounts that were increasing revenue, the first one is the sanitary engineers' office for fifty thousand dollars in Fund four sixty-six, and that was due to a revenue transfer from Fund number six zero two, and then, on planning commission, I received an additional three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars, and this is for the head grant, that project allocation, the expense side of this was approved by the commissioners on the March twenty-seventh meeting, sometimes when they receive money, they don't, haven't budgeted for it, so they do their revenue and the expense side, they don't always show up the same week, because the Budget Commission only meets every other week.
Gotcha, okay, take care of those, make sure you want me to keep going, or you wanna take them?
You go on, everyone.
Okay, um, okay, so, that takes us to agenda item number six, correct, to approve an agreement, by and between the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, Trumbull County Auditor Martha Yoder, and Environmental Systems Research Institute to purchase Esri, Esri Enterprise Advantage Program, EEAP Consulting Services, total cost is a hundred eight thousand, five hundred dollars, to be paid from that fund, and this will provide one year of consulting and training services, the agreement has been reviewed by the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office, is this something we've normally done in the past, Christie?
Yes, I'm gonna defer to Hannah for a second.
I'm sorry.
No, this, uh.
This is new, this is new.
Tim Hanford, IT Director, this is a new program that we're, we're gonna be getting involved in, before we would normally interact with third-party vendors, with this program, this is new for, for Esri, they are going to be providing support and training for us for upgrading our software, and potentially bringing in other departments, such as sanitary, such as planning, where they won't have to purchase their, their own Esri licenses, and it, it, in the long run, it's gonna save the county money from that end, it also is gonna give us the ability to upgrade our property search features, we will be able to host those in-house, and provide better support for the, for the community with property searches, so this, this is kind of a big deal, because it's, it's gonna upgrade our current software, and it's also going to provide the train to staff to be able to support that software. In the long run, it will end up saving the county money, it's just, it's gonna wrap up all, all these little separate pieces and bring them all into one area.
Okay, okay, all right, questions on that? Moving on, to concur with the engineer, Trumbull County engineer to grant the right-of-way permits, requested by the companies listed, that's Village Energy Cooperative and ASW Pipeline, and by the way, if anybody's on the line from the Highway Engineers' Office, feel free to chime in here, but we're gonna move through these, those are routine right-of-way permits. Number eight, to approve the personnel action for the employment transfer of Mr. Keith Ames to the position of Sewer Line Maintenance Assistant, pay range six, zero years, at seventeen dollars and fifty-two cents, to the position of TV Inspector, Grouding Assistant Technician, pay range six, zero years, at seventeen fifty-two, so it's sort of a lateral move there, Bob?
It is, it's on our sewer crew, we have three assistants, two of them run a flush truck or a back truck, the other position runs our TV truck, so he's just moving from the flush truck to the TV truck.
Okay, what happens with the, with the vacated position?
We already have it posted.
Okay, very good. Questions, anyone? Number nine, to accept third-party, third-party contract between grantee Direction Home of Eastern Ohio, and sub-grantees Grace African Methodist Episcopal Church, and Easter Seals of Mahoning, Trumbull, and Columbia, Columbiana Counties for ten thousand dollars. Per Ohio Healthy Aging Grant Agreements, as awarded March sixth, twenty twenty-four, per action taken by the Trumbull County Commissioners, and duly recorded in the Journal, grantee may enter into a third-party contract to accomplish the intent and purposes of the agreement after the proposed third-party contract has been approved by Trumbull County in writing, submitted, as submitted to Senior Services Administrator Diane Fiskowick Jerkovic, Direction Home of Eastern Ohio, and request a third-party contract for the kinship respite program with Grace African Methodist Episcopal Church, one one three seven Main Avenue, Southwest, one. Diane, tell us a little bit about this, 'cause I don't know anything about it.
Both number nine. One of these days, one of us.
It's not Italian, I can't pronounce it.
Both number nine and number eleven are similar, when the Ohio Healthy Aging Grant requests were submitted, they had in their plan to subcontract what they were being granted to these third parties, so per our legal team, Prosecutor's Office, they review our original contracts, and in that contract, these grantees have the ability to sub-grantee them contracts, so basically, number nine is, Direction Home is going to sub-grant to Grace and to Easter Seals for their kinship respite program that was already awarded, and number eleven is Youngest Jewish Federation is sub-granting to Merkin and Associates for their various programs that were also requested.
Is this new?
Prosecutor's Office did approve that.
Okay, is this new, have we, has the grantee used the sub-grant award for other?
We've never had anyone that has sub-granted that way, so this is.
But it's always been a part of the contract, that they could do that?
Yeah, I forget which item number is, item number eight, our contracts have the ability to sub-grant.
And Advisory Council's okay with that?
It was requested that way in the original, but we had to go through this whole extra process to allow that sub-grantee to occur.
Okay, all right, so that takes care of number nine and eleven.
Number ten, is my oopsie.
So.
And these applicants requested the funding, I put it on the agenda as they had requested it with their legal name, their name that they had requested it under, but when they submitted their W9s and all their backup documentation, they don't know their legal names, and now we've got some incorporated data to the terminology, two of the five were, I, I should've seen that, because they are current senior levy providers, but the other three are new to me, so, that's what number ten is all about, legal names to agree to their W9s.
Okay, which is important, I guess, the only.
That's my oopsie, well, I should've had that one before, yeah.
Okay, we correct it, that's what we do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes care.
By the way, I'm not gonna be here tomorrow, because we have a happy health grant, or a senior levy, I'm sorry, a senior levy health fair, at the Liberty Shepherd of the Valley, so I will listen in, as best as I can, if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, number twelve, any questions on those, I think we covered those, number twelve, to release Mr. Vince, Vincent Peterson, as a member of the Trumbull County Local Corrections Planning Board, obviously, Mr. Peterson is retired, long employee here, Trumbull County, great, great person, great employee here in Trumbull County, so we definitely will miss him in the, in on that board as well. Number thirteen, to release Judge Thomas Geisinger, as a member of the Trumbull County Local Corrections Planning Board, again, he's no longer sitting judge, so, so we're looking for those two positions, obviously, for the recommendation on both of those, of Mr. Tracy Hunt, Chief Probation Officer, so I'm sure we'll be filling those soon. Number fourteen, to adopt an improvement resolution determining to proceed with the construction of the Scoville Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, NOS County Project number five dash S dash sixteen, in the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District, Mosquito Creek Subdistrict, and authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners' clerk to ask for sealed bids for the construction of said project.
Scott Verder, sanitary engineer. You know, the public hearing was held on December fourteenth, where the project received a ninety-three point seven seven percent approval, based on that, we're proceeding towards construction.
What was the approval of it?
Ninety-three point seven seven percent.
Okay, great, great.
Fourteen homes and a church, we benefited by this.
That's right, that's right. Okay, questions? See, Mr. Bellish waiting patiently, we'll get to you as soon as this is over, okay, is that okay?
Oh, sure.
I don't wanna interrupt now, but I just noticed you out of the corner of my eye, but we'll get to you. Okay, that's, that's really important as well. Number fifteen, to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board, to sign a notice to proceed letter for Proscape Septic and Landscape Contractors for the replacement of three household treatment systems being funded through the Home Sewage Treatment System Reserve Program for eligible homeowners, awarded on March sixth, twenty twenty-four, just quickly, if you wanna.
Nick Coggins, Trumbull County Clinic Commission, fifteen and sixteen are both related to the Heat and Shoot Project, these are two of the contracts, contractors that were awarded back on March sixth, to connect some of the lower moderate income households to the sanitary line, that was recently completed by our sanitary engineers, this is just a notice to proceed for two of those contractors, the other two have already received the notice to proceed, and are out there working.
Thank you, that's Nick Coggins from the plane, from there. Number seventeen, execute on behalf of Trumbull County, the natural gas, here we go. go, uh, Mr. Bellish, natural gas purchase contract with Constellation, uh, new energy gas division, uh, commercial and industrial sales effective with the September twenty twenty-four billing cycle and ending with the August twenty twenty-five billing cycle at a fixed rate of three point zero nine per MCF to the burner tip for the purchase of natural gas for county departments listed. This action per the recommendation of Mr. Tom Bellish, uh, President of Buckeye Energy Brokers. Tom, you want to talk about this for?
Yeah, sure. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to work with, uh, Board of Commissioners. Uh, so last year, had the price of three sixty-five. This year, we eclipsed that. Uh, three oh nine was priced last week, it's slightly higher. Um, buyers only buy so many price points, they bought one at three oh nine, three nineteen. So today is three nineteen. It's a little higher. Just still saving the fourteen thousand dollars rather than the other.
So do we need to generalize this to three nineteen in here then? Or do you do it tomorrow?
Yeah, so like, like it says at the bottom, it prices does change. Yeah, prices dropped tomorrow.
Right.
They, it's a moving target.
It is.
Um, so this is unusual for it to happen like this. We've had suppliers hold it for us.
Right.
Uh, but they just couldn't.
But we're still way under where we were.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is, uh, still recommended, uh.
For how long?
Uh, one year.
Okay.
So three sixty-five down to nineteen, seventeen back down, so I still recommend it. And, uh, best we can, uh, but that was the quote this morning. So I had all the suppliers rebid, refresh their bids in the season.
Right. So is the public available still to get in on these types of pricing?
Yeah, for, for the aggregation, uh, three, still three ninety-nine for residents, three eighty-nine with the discount, those over sixty-five can get about three eighty-nine.
I know last year when we did this, we announced how to do it, and literally I had dozens of people call me and many called back and said they went down from like fourteen bucks or nine bucks to the three-year or four-year, I think it was four thirteen, something we're getting around or whatever, but what's, so let's publicize how they do that again for the people that are listening, how do they get involved in an aggregate program?
Yeah, we, we can do that. Um, I know that, those numbers are, those phone numbers are on the, on the Commissioners' website and, uh, I'll have to, uh, up, uh, that new number.
Can we just, can we post that, Tim?
Mm-hmm.
On the Commissioners' website for.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely.
Interested public to want.
As long as we have them, we can do it, yeah.
Okay, we'll get that, we'll just, Tom, just get that, uh.
Yeah, I'll have to, uh.
To Tim and we'll put it on the Trumbull County Commissioner's website.
Yep, yep.
Let people know this is who we're dealing with and then they can call in their own. What about something in the paper? Notice in the paper? That's up to the paper to pick up on that, but that is, uh, we did help a lot of people last year when we announced that and the electric rates even, you know, different time, it's, it helped a lot of people.
You couldn't choose, uh, Commissioners, Alexander, Devene, Johnson, Bush, HR, you could choose to do a press release if you want, um, that, that's completely up to the Board.
It's a good idea too.
So if you feel like it's beneficial to do a press release, um, we can send it out, we can type it up and send it out to all the news media.
I can have that prepared.
You can have that. Yeah, let's do that. But just to be clear, that we're still under for the, for the aggregation system, we're still under that other three years that we.
Yeah, it's almost, well, it's almost two years now.
Two years now.
At this point.
So that hasn't changed. That hasn't changed. This is for our building.
Yeah, this is just for the building.
Okay.
Uh, there's an opportunity to get even a better price.
Okay.
So I wanted to offer that to the Board.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah, still recommend that and, uh, really good deal, I think.
So we're certainly going to see a savings at Trumbull, you know, as far as us.
Yeah, sort of the current rate.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, if you want to have a, yeah, let's drop a press release and we can do the press release and get the agreement over. That'd be great.
From Constellation.
Now, is this lower prices, is that just a sign of mild winter, excess supply?
Uh, a little bit of each.
Decreased demand.
It is, uh, no, I, when they send in the numbers, I just get a number, I don't really get an explanation, but it's significantly better than anybody else, so I'm not sure what, uh, they're just being aggressive, win the business back, because they, I don't think they've had, ever had this, had IGS in the past and, uh, um, others just trying to.
If they're foot the door.
Yeah.
Very good. Appreciate you shopping and getting us the lowest rates, that's for sure.
Great, thanks for that.
Thank you. I can only imagine what our utility bills are with the building, so a little bit of a savings is a long, long way in government, for sure. Sure, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Tom. Uh, eighteen, uh, to award a contract to Baker Bednar Snyder and Associates, um, for the new Dogtown Design Qualification Project at its new location next to the Animal Welfare League located at eight twelve Youngstown Kingsville Road, Bryan, Ohio. Auto engineering costs of one hundred ninety-two thousand dollars to be paid from the fund as listed. This is obviously a long time coming, but we're, um.
One step closer.
One step closer, and we keep chugging along here, so.
Yes.
Um, this is, this is a step in the right direction and, uh, Baker Bednar, who we've worked with in the past on many projects and, and even when we, when we looked at, uh, expansion on, on the Dogtown in the prior, and even prior, prior years, looking at a new facility, they were there, so it's, it's good that they're, they're familiar with a lot of what we're doing and what we try, um, to accomplish with this, with this facility. So I feel confident moving in that direction. Bill, thank you for all the legwork that you're doing and, um, let's break ground by fall.
Yes.
That's what I said.
Yes.
Okay, uh, number nineteen, um, to appropriate funds to mitigate the growth and negative impact of the spread of hydrilla in Mosquito Lake, oh, goodness, is on here, and the amount of three hundred thousand to be paid in three annual installments, uh, starting in twenty twenty-four, uh, from the fund as listed, uh, to be used by the Trumbull County Economic Development Director, Nick Coggins, for the purposes of processing and paying invoices reviewed and approved by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. Payments will be made directly to the state purchasing selected vendor, who is Ohio Lake Management Services, uh, doing business as, uh, Aquad Dock Pond, Dock Pond and Lake Management, uh, Mayfield Road, Chardon, Ohio, uh, who is under contract with ODNR to conduct fluoridone, uh, chemical treatment that addresses the aquatic nuisance vegetation issue at Mosquito Lake. The appointment of the Office of Economic Development was made by the Commissioners on January second, twenty twenty-four, uh, under the authority of the Ohio Revised Code as listed, uh, and that provides authority for the expenditure of funds by the Office of Economic Development. With the approval of the Board, uh, make loans or grants and provide other forms of financial assistance for the purpose of economic development, including financial assistance for permanent public improvements in compliance with applicable laws of the state and fix the rate of interest and charges to be made for such financial assistance. County recognizes the critical role Mosquito Lake has in economic development and prosperity of Trumbull County and the importance of mitigating the growth and negative impact of the spread of hydrilla on the lake. The expenditure of funds is contingent upon the Ohio, the, excuse me, the Office of Economic Development entering into a memorandum of understanding with the vendor of Ohio Lake Management Services, again, doing businesses, doing business as Aquad Dock Pond at, and Lake Management, in order to define the process for the payment of invoices in coordination with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and receipt of written approvals within correspondence detailing a specific proposal by ODNR, US Army Corps of Engineers, and any other entity having control over the lake and or water quality for drinking purposes. So this is something that we've obviously discussed ad nauseam before, but. We've been working on this for about a year and, and the big thing with this is there's so many different entities and then we had to figure out the legality of us giving money that isn't county, this isn't a county-owned lake or anything like that, but if this were a highway, if this needed a turning lane, if this needed traffic congestion, if this was something that was going to benefit the citizens of the county, um, economically, uh, which it absolutely is, and that's why we decided to go with our planning commission, that the amount of money that's brought to Mosquito Lake with its one point six million visitors a year, uh, that we have, um, is being negatively impacted by this hydrilla. Uh, there's a safety factor of, uh, people busting props, people breaking ankles trying to ski, people not being able to get out of the marinas.
Yeah.
And it's something that will scare away investment, scare away people coming to the lake where they can choose one of the other lakes that don't have this problem. Um, this has been something that's come in the last couple of years, the hydrilla is just one plant species. We don't want to give the impression that we're going to treat this and there'll be no more vegetation on the lake and it's all going to be, you know, crystal clear. That's not the case, but the hydrilla is the bad one that mats together, that really has no, uh, resourceful biological use for fish and or the environment. It sucks the oxygen out of the water, it mats up together and, and causes safety issues, and it spreads very quickly. And not only spreads here, but spreads to other lakes with, with just minute pieces of it that could be attached to someone's boat or in their build's, build's water or, um, stuck to the trailer or things like that. So, um, it is something that needs to be treated as a nuisance, it's something that's non-native to the United States, it was brought in on, um, freighter ships from overseas that just doesn't click environmentally with our lake. So to keep that economic engine as it is, second-largest lake in the state, a hundred thousand a year over three years to stop this is a small, small investment on our county's part to, to return we're going to see in the future. I personally think we need to dump millions in that lake, but we'll go one piece at a time. If this is a start, if this handles this aspect of things, let's handle the weeds and then we'll worry about infrastructure and other stuff as we, as we move into the future. But we cannot ignore this because if we do, and all the scientists, all the biologists have already told us, the stuff doubles every year. So if we're looking at a three hundred thousand dollar bill now, if we don't act now, we'll have a six hundred thousand dollar bill next year and then over a million in the third year if we ignore it and we turn a blind eye to this stuff. And this is real science right in front of our eyes and we cannot ignore real science. This isn't theory or someone's philosophy. They have experience with other lakes in Ohio and the United States and we've got the best of the best professionals stating, this is here, it's a problem, here's how you fix it, either fix it or ignore it, but if you ignore it, you're going to pay the consequences down the road. Right. And the consequences are economic and, you know, I mean, to the point where people were telling me, well, I don't even dock my boat there anymore. That's right. Or I'm not getting a slip this year, I'm not getting a dock, or I'm going to Berlin instead. Right. Uh, and that's something, uh, Bill Danzo, thank you for you and your staff. I know this is, uh, kind of been a pain for you to figure out the legality loopholes with this thing, but there are some other counties that have done this, that he reached out to them, uh, he did his due diligence on this and found the way to make sure that we were doing this legal and protecting ourselves also. Um, you know, there's still a few little hurdles we got to get over, making, you know, getting Warren to sign off and, and the core in the state, but that's, we're all in the same team with this stuff. We all want a healthy Mosquito Lake, so those hurdles, I believe, won't be an issue at all, but you've cleared the biggest one by finding a way for us to get involved now without any further delay and cause us to potentially have twice the bill next year. Thank you.
Uh, Christie, fine auditor, Professor Derek, oh my gosh, I'm actually going to make a name. Apparently we can. Uh, Professor Derek Auditor's Office. Uh, just a note, as part of this agenda item, we've also put a, a note at the bottom that the payments are going to be paid out of the Planning Commission's general, uh, fund budget with transfers from not Fund Nine Forty-nine, the Medicare.
Okay.
That's attached over the three years. So that way we take care of any budgetary issues at this time and don't have to put them on each time the payments are made.
Very good, very good. And Beth, I was going to say Beth Cormack, we have to thank her because she kind of really wasn't her jurisdiction, but as important as Mosquito Lake is our tourism here, um, that's one of the number one tourist attractions, it is the number one tourist attraction in the, in the region. She stepped up with the help of the, uh, Dee Dee Petrowski, the Mayor of Cortland, Jeffrey Jennings, Special Events Coordinator, and then the, the Park Manager and the, uh, US Army Corps of Engineers Manager, they've all been instrumental in this thing of everyone doing their part to, to do this. We kind of needed one person to generate the emails, one person to really get things together, and Beth stepped up with that. She not only did that, but she reached out to both of our US Senators and our congressional offices that affect Mosquito Lake and, uh, they're all aware of what we're doing and it's because of her efforts, so I appreciate that too, Beth. Thank you, Beth. This is a bigger project than any of us could have done on our own. Great. Okay, uh, number twenty, uh, to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act, Liberty Township Park. Uh, so I know Liberty Township, this, I believe this is their only ask that they had, and if you go to the back page, uh, one-time grant, um, whereas the county has determined, uh, that Liberty Township has demonstrated that improvement of the proposed walking path will assist in responding to the adverse impact of a public health emergency, and therefore the county has determined that. In the judgment of the Board, all and grant qualifies as a type of project that will respond to and mitigate the adverse economic effects of the pandemic. And again, one-time grant to Liberty Township in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand to be used toward the improvement of the stormwater management system at Liberty Center, uh, Park, and two hundred thousand, uh, to be used toward improving the ballfields, picnic pavilions, and walking paths at Liberty Center Park. So, uh, again, all those outdoor, uh, projects that we have, that, that obviously, a lot of them, when we talk about public, public recreation spaces, they all, they all qualify for, uh, that, and this is Liberty Township's only ask, I believe, from the. And this is, this is. It's a larger ask. As far as townships go, Brookfield and Liberty got the biggest chunk so far. Yeah. But there were drainage issue things involved that are going to affect our, our whole county with that. That's right. And with the importance economically, we know, as, you know, four twenty-two in Niles and Belmont Avenue and Liberty is often overlooked as kind of. Yep. Old news. Um, there's a, a, a plan there, Build a Better Belmont Group is, has a plan there to work with us to increase the awareness of Belmont Avenue, again, make it relevant again. Yep. And this ties all in with that, with Liberty having the ballfields, I mean, I've been there before on game day, watching kids play Little League, and it's, it's like a beehive of, of activity. And for them to not be able to have games on some days because of poor drainage and then send everybody home and then have to reschedule and delay, they definitely have a problem there. This is right where their community center is. Yep. So, you know, there's certain places like that with Gerard Community Center, the Wellness Center in Niles, the, um, Liberty, uh, ballfields that are kind of the anchor points of the community, and I think we all saw yesterday, people gravitate toward, toward those as community, as a place to go, and this is something we have to bring these up and keep these at a high elevated platform as far as our awareness to make sure that the key points in this county, the key meeting places, the key community aspects are funded and funded well and we, we don't overlook their needs. And, and hats off to Liberty Township trustees on this for filling the grant out correctly, filling it out detailed that basically they, they, we couldn't say no to this. They made it so that, that we had to say yes to their request because they did it so well and they dug all their eyes and crossed all their teeth. And this is something that, I know Liberty Township, a lot of times, it's been said to me since I've been here, and even when I was campaigning before, they feel like they're more Youngstown than they are Trumbull County, they are Trumbull County, and we need to embrace that and we need to make them one of our assets again and not trade them away, the Youngstown, so. Great. Happy to do this one. Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, and twenty-one, uh, goes along with that, obviously, so, uh, with the legal, from our legal counsel, from, um, Baker Dublakar Beck Wiley and Matthews. Uh, number twenty-two, to award a contract to Bechtel Controls, um. If Sheriff's listening also, I don't mean to bring. Yeah, no, no. If Sheriff's listening tomorrow, Sheriff, we, um, do have a dummy check, there will be Liberty trustees here tomorrow. Okay. That are coming to the meeting. Right. And we approve this thing, as I feel we will. Oh, yeah. It would be nice if we have, I know I talked to her about ordering dummy checks before. Yeah. But, so they can put it in their local little hometown newspaper, things like that. Sure. I don't know if we have it back from the printers yet, but if we do, I'd like to I don't know if we have it back from printers yet, but if we do, I'd like to have that for tomorrow.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Uh, twenty-two, to award a contract to Bechtel Controls, Inc., uh, for the removal, disposal and replacement of current warehouse lighting, total cost of thirty-two thousand nine hundred eighty dollars, uh, from eighteen sixty-nine Warren Avenue, Niles, Ohio.
Board of Elections?
Board of Elections, okay, yeah.
Yeah, we should, we should.
We got to put Board of Elections in there.
Yeah, we need to, we need to add that in there, please.
Let's see.
Um, we, this was brought up to us before. We just refitted the building, put a new roof on, made it like one of the top buildings in the county and we didn't do anything about the lights in the warehouse. So that's kind of an oversight, I guess, in a sense. But the employees do work in the warehouse a lot and as we know, lighting is, it was a big factor, a big issue with, uh, being able to do their job correctly, health of employee, the whole nine yards now today.
Yes, we did, Edra McCavige, Deputy Director, we did receive three quotes.
Okay.
And we did go, two of them were very close and went with Bechtel being the lowest and best. They put in our service, they put in the remodeling, our everything there. And we're very confident that they'll do a great job.
Thank you, Edra. Okay, number twenty-three is, uh, executive session pursuant to Ohio Advice Code one twenty-one dot twenty-two G three, um, pending or imminent, uh, court action. Uh, twenty-four is to reconvene, twenty-five is another executive session pursuant to Ohio Advice Code one twenty-one dot twenty-two G one, um, for the discipline of an employee. And then reconvening from that from twenty-six. Twenty-seven, uh, to, to approve the personnel action for a two-day unpaid suspension of an employee of the Trump County Building Maintenance Department. This employee violated the Trump County Policy and Procedures Manual. The employee will serve the suspension from Tuesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four through Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
I guess we need, um, do we need to have that on there approved or disapproved? Because we haven't made the decision on yet until we have the executive action. We already have it listed on here.
I guess you can put approve or disapprove, but, um, we will be coming out of executive from that.
Correct.
So we'll be making that.
So, I mean, you can.
I guess we always vote no on the approve if we need to.
Right.
But I don't know, I've seen them worded different ones.
Yeah.
That's why.
Approve or deny?
Yeah, right.
You can, or you just don't, make a motion and it just doesn't go through. And then it's, 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 it's up to you.
Okay. Whatever, whatever past practices, the best, I guess, look up past. I only ask because I do remember seeing approve or deny on some other executive sessions we got.
I don't, uh, for the record, HR, I don't put approve or deny. If you would like me to, I can. However, obviously we're asking you to approve it, strongly asking you to approve it. Of course, the board can do whatever you want.
Right.
Um, however, I would just, if you don't want to approve it, then there's just no second. And it, it, the motion dies on the board itself. But, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just, the only reason I stress that is because you've got, and I want to caution you, we've gotten very into the weeds of what needs or needs not to be put into this agenda, okay? We don't want to stir that back up because we've said other communities, we've been looking. Lisa and I, Kristi's not, you know, Lisa's not here today, but Lisa and I have been looking in depth at how other communities do their motions, their notes, their agendas, and we write books. I, I'm telling you, we write theories and synopsis compared to other counties. So, I mean, I just be, just be careful because once you put that, you know.
Yeah, everything's fluid, you know.
We could put a million words in here. It doesn't necessarily mean.
So what you're saying is Skolnik's got the easy job with the educators and Youngstown, Ray's got the hard job. Yeah, we, that is something we, I've glanced at and looked into too, because we are. If anybody thinks we don't do what we need to do as a board as far as journalizing things, we beat a dead horse with some stuff. I mean, we are, we, we go way overboard on what we need to do.
I'll be honest with you, um, I was actually shocked and this is no, you know, disregard to any other county. It just surprised me. HR's been questioning a lot about our agenda items. I have seen two other counties who put personnel actions on with no dollar amount, no dollar amount at all. They just say to move this person from here to there. That's it. Um, so I just want to make sure, you know.
Yeah.
We don't need to put our whole life and, and words and everything, you know, you guys know what you need to do.
Right. Yep, yep. Okay, twenty-eight, to enter into executive session, uh, pursuant to O R C one twenty-one dot twenty-two G four, uh, which is preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations and the collective bargaining strategy for the Trump County Sheriff's Department. And then twenty-nine is to reconvene from that. Number thirty is, um, to accept or reject the fact-finding report, um, and recommendations issued by Howard D. Silver Esquire, um, who was fact-finder on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Which deputies are these, which grants?
So this is the last, Commissioner Alexander, even Joseph Bush, Community Resources Department, aren't you correct, if I'm remembering? Um, this is the last, this is the CO Sergeant. So this is unit six. Um, this will complete all of the sheriff's OPBA department contracts. We've done one, two, three, four, five and now six. So this is the final one. Um, I do apologize, I can't help when a fact-finder report's going to come in. Obviously I forwarded it to you, it came in Friday at two forty-five. We know that you only have seven days to accept or reject. So unfortunately this one didn't follow the normal cadence. It is what it is, so, all right.
Okay, understand. That concludes the agenda.
Um, we've got Sher has something for us, let's go right.
I, I have a, a couple of things I need to talk to you guys about, um, first.
Sher Taylor, Commissioner's office.
Sher Taylor, County Public Clerk.
Step, step up a little forward, Sher, so they can.
Step up to the mic.
Capture you on the mic.
No, I do not. As a matter of fact, I want to get out of here as quick as I can. Okay, first and foremost, um, I, I do recall I asked about carpet for Family Court down there. We have three quotes and, uh, Family Court is actually requesting that we go with the lowest bid, which is, it's a significant lower amount. So, um, eleven thousand seven eighty-six eighty-nine from Sutoli. Pro flooring is thirteen thousand four seventy-two thirty. And then last, we have condo carpets, which is sixteen thousand nine ninety-six seventy-nine. For all the same work, same amount, same everything.
So Sutoli's the low one?
Yeah.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
Okay, awesome. Now, next, I have.
Commissioner, you.
Oh, no, I talked to Stott one bit.
Oh, okay, you did? Okay, excellent. So that's all.
That's good, we can do that.
That's all squared away. Uh, where am I taking the money from?
Kristi Fine, Auditor's Office. Um, if you guys approve that, we'll find, file tax. But the, and we would also include that wording in the agenda item where you're approving where it's being paid out of, in the general fund with the transfer from sales tax. Because we're trying to get out of making those expense payments directly out of the sales tax fund and, and put them into the general fund where they're.
So I can write that up for her to add to that. Perfect. Okay, now, we also use, we're, we're under an agreement with MAXIMUS. Um, a lot of the counties use MAXIMUS, it's for a cost allocation plan. Keep everything coordinated, try to keep costs lower, see where we can save, that kind of thing. This is the book that we get. And we get it every year, but there's one little nuance. This really needs to be certified by us that this is okay, that we're, we're in agreement with it. MAXIMUS goes through a lot of work and I'm certain that they don't rewrite this every year. They change the costs as they come, they come, get into the unit, they go get all of our own costs. Everything, our, our numbers from our.
They pull payroll from all of our departments.
Exactly.
Not just costs too, but like number of items. Because they allocate.
Number of people.
Right, yeah.
It's, it's a totality.
Transactions and everything.
So what I need from somebody is, and we did get this electronically, this is just preliminary, it's not going to be printed until we sign this okay. That, that's what this essentially is, an okay for this plan. So I just need to know who will be doing that.
Who will be signing?
Yeah. Right now I have an invoice from MAXIMUS, it's fifteen grand yearly. You guys are all that.
I know that, as you said, the majority of counties use MAXIMUS.
Yeah.
And they've done a great job.
Yes, they have.
In all of our buildings.
Fantastic.
Um, have we, is this something that needs to go out for bid? Or is this, is this like something that, you know?
Just off the top, I would guess that this, first of all, is well under the seventy-five thousand dollar threshold and arguably is probably for the services of consultant, it probably is exempt for a number of reasons.
Okay.
Uh, I, I also wouldn't doubt that because they work all over, that there may be some sort of purchasing contract that they're also part of. But again, because of the low dollar amount, I don't know that that's ever been asked over office. Uh, because again, that's well under.
And here's the thing, they, they've worked with the county for as long as I can remember. They've done a tremendous job.
Yes, they have.
So I, I'm, I'm prepared to move on.
It's, it's forty-five thousand dollars for three years of all, I mean, they do an exorbitant amount of work for us.
Yeah.
An exorbitant amount. So I just.
I don't even know what other entities are out there that would do that. Plus for another entity to come in and redo everything MAXIMUS has done.
Right, it's going to be significant.
I, I don't know how they would do that.
So like for, and I know they have other counties.
Oh.
And that's why, you know, I'm talking to him because no one's really ever, I, and I did it for the first time. Apparently the, the initial spreadsheet has never been divvied out to each department, but I did that this year because I think that everybody should be privy to what is on this report. So I, I got a little, a few flocks about it, you know, what do I do with it? Just look it over. I don't know that he's doing all the numbers. I just think every department should have their own information. And I know for a fact that a couple of them have went through and checked their numbers and they match completely with units. So with that being said, you know, thi- this is what we use for J F S and C F D A to give us an amount for indirect costs and get reimbursed for the rent.
Utilities.
And it, yeah.
Yep.
And because it's, utilities are significant. So.
And they utilize every square inch of what they're using and charge back, basically.
So literally like that's how I get my amounts to, you know, bill the other departments. It is only C F D A and J F S, but it's significant, I can tell you that. Just rent alone is like, yesterday I did the check, or last week I did the check, I don't know, days are all running together. It was like almost fifteen thousand dollars just in rent. I don't have this indirect, the indirect cost, they're going to be given to me when this is completed. So once I have that, then I can forward it and bill back to those particular departments so we can get some money, more money put back in the general fund.
So you're asking to put this on the agenda and for us.
It doesn't really get put on the agenda. I just need to know who signs this.
I, my understanding is that there's been confusion in the past as to who is supposed to sign it. So at one time, County Auditor signed it, Agent Yano, a few times Paula has signed it as a clerk. Uh, but I believe Sher reached out to Tate Anderson with MAXIMUS and he said that traditionally the counties have a commissioner sign with certification.
I don't mind signing it, I don't care. The President of the Board, I guess that's probably inherent, I can sign it, nobody's got.
Okay, awesome, then I will get with one of you and then I can get him going on this so we can get our la and get this firmed up.
I guess, just, Bill Danzo from the Prosecutor's Office, I guess I just might suggest that if, even if the President of the Board is going to sign it, journalizing it wouldn't be a bad idea. That way it's clear that, that the Board itself has seen the, the document and has approved that signature. Uh, generally that's the way for ha- to have binding effect, that's how it would be done.
So let's put it on the agenda next week.
When in doubt, put it on.
To enter an agreement or whatever.
Then I, I will let Kate know. I'll give him, I'll give, I'll notify him and let him know that it's going to go on the agenda next week to be signed. Okay, okay, so that one.
Sher, real quick, I do have a question. So we should already have an agreement, right, with MAXIMUS?
We've had an agreement.
So we have the agreement.
It's all, the agreement's already.
When he said agreement, I just want to make sure I'm.
No, no, no.
We don't need an agreement, we already have an agreement. We're just journalizing the acceptance of the MAXIMUS.
This particular report, this particular year's report.
So we're just accepting.
Not an agreement with MAXIMUS.
Yes, so I want to make that very clear, the language well and in filter, but it should be to approve the, um, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five report from MAXIMUS or whatever, yeah.
It's actually twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, we're not looking at an agreement, we should already have an agreement. We're all worried. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
So it'd be like receiving the monthly. Be like receiving the monthly minutes of the Dog Pounder of the.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Tourism Bureau.
Who knew somebody that's unqualified would know that?
Amazing.
Sorry.
Weird.
Not sorry.
Ah, okay, and I have one last thing. And I'm so sorry for rolling everybody up, but we received from, it's called the L A T C F. It's the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. We got a little bit of money, ARPA money from that, but it's different in the respect that you can use it for anything you want to, except lobbying. So we have a hundred and three thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. I have done two reports now and not one penny has been sent out of it. Can we please spend this money?
I can find the word.
So.
See for that lady?
I have, I have stuff for you guys to look over so you can see exactly what you can do with it.
That's awesome, great.
But it's not extrinsic, we don't need the attorney to go through it.
Yeah.
From, I'm sorry, throw that out there, Commissioners, Go Heart, Trump County Maintenance, could we throw that towards yellow lighting project? If they needed it, they wanted to investigate on?
Yeah, I'd be good with that.
I just want to spend the money and, and do the report and say it's all been spent zero. We received two, they call them tranches, we received two of them, like each one was like fifty-one thousand something. So we've had the money for quite a while.
They were deposited into the ARPA fund, seventy-seven.
But they're not as, not as restricted as the.
They're not the.
As the regular ARPA.
See, I might pay in the, the.
So do we still need to get a Baker, uh, Dublakar's opinion on this?
No, that's not my, that's my understanding is no. It's not the same as the ARPA, I mean, it's two different, it's a different, uh, funding source.
Okay.
It's just accounted for in the same fund because we put all the ARPA, whether it was from the, um, fed or from here.
We got the, the one twelve twenty-nine twenty-two and the other one was nine fourteen twenty-three. So they just split it in half and sent them to us. Wire them.
Oh, wow, yeah. This is very. I'll tell you what, Commissioner, let's take, let's take a week to review this thing.
Yeah, no, no.
A little bit before we make any decisions on this.
Yeah, I mean, I don't expect anything to be happening today. I just wanted to make you guys aware that this is sitting there and I've done two reports now and zero has been spent. And it's pretty clear that we can, we can do what we want with it. You just can't use it for lobbying, which we're not lobbying anything.
If not.
Do you want to keep the whole folder?
If you want to send even a copy of that down to my email, I'll send it too.
I will.
Yeah. So if you can look in there a little bit, see if there's any loopholes of what we can, can't spend it on, then report back maybe next Tuesday, we'll go over this again and we'll get a chance to let it sink in and do some research. You know, this is talking about tribal governments, you've got tribal all through here and stuff, so we got to, I mean, I got to read into this more.
That's who the funding source was, was the tribal government, yeah. We had some confusion when it came in.
Yeah, we did, we had some, it was a little bit.
But, but it does say, uh, bottom, bottom half of the first page, um, you know, talks about roads, bridges and water infrastructure, but then it goes on to say, they also invest in restoring and bolstering government capacity such as increasing the size of their government workforce or investing in improvements in service delivery, um, like technology, infrastructure and data analysis. I mean, there's a, that's sort of a wide umbrella there, a large umbrella when you talk about.
This, this was a lot you used.
Dents jumping in.
The regular ARPA fund, it's not extrinsic, it was really.
Bolstering government capacity.
That's exactly what it was.
I'll send it.
That's what it was intended to be.
Interesting.
So I just wanted to bring that.
Thank you.
Because I think it's just kind of like fallen by the wayside a little bit.
Yeah.
Everything.
It was in there, it was just.
Yeah, yeah, it's been there. It's just, we really have not, really had not had the time to go through a lot of stuff that we need to just, we need to start working on this.
Yeah, yeah.
And we need to spend this so I can stop doing all of this reporting and zero, 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 zero. We need to do something with it. So just a suggestion.
Yeah, sometimes there's timelines on these too. So you have to make sure that we're.
So it's just.
Not missing a timeline and not spending money.
I want to say if I recall correctly, it's like next year.
Commissioner, there's also, there's two.
There's a time limit, don't own it.
Two ARPA funds, we were just made aware of this week, they were denied. One was for Kinsman, um, Electronic Sign, the other one was for Johnson's Electronic Sign out front where we were, post-community news and updates, this and that. So there are some things like that that are out there that are minimal, they're twenty-three thousand, thirty thousand, or maybe some of that we can still fulfill the wish that's already there that was, that wasn't approved, um, by, uh, Tony Rogers.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Check, big check, big fake dummy check?
Big check, okay, we, that kind of got lost by the wayside as well.
We call Minuteman, see if they whip some up for us?
Big check, okay. We, that kinda got lost by the wayside as well, but I already did. It's already done. He's gonna bring one that he had just laying around, so we just might have to doctor it up a little bit, so we'll see what's up.
That's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, and that's all I have. So, I'm out.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I'd like, I'd like to, if we could, uh, Commissioner?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to put Beth on the spot a little bit to give us a little update on the eclipse and...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What happened around the county? No issues? I talked to John Hickey. He was counting, he called me actually at, uh, two thirty. He said, Commissioner, I need you to come down to my office right away. And I said, what's going on, John? He said, I'm bored. Nothing's happening. And I said, uh, so he, which is a good thing. You know, we didn't have any big crashes or any, you know, grid problems or any safety issues with the community. It seemed like, uh, what I viewed it as was like, when he drove around the county and I went over to the airport and drove around the Vian area and that area just looking and people were in their yards. They were playing cornhole. They were barbecuing. It seemed like it was Fourth of July or something, like a Sunday, Fourth of July picnic everywhere in the community. And li- literally anywhere, there's a big parking lot, whether it was at Baker Elementary or whether it was at the airport or crossing the airport, airport parking lot was full of people. There's people coming out, throwing their picnic blankets out, eating food, having picnic baskets and stuff and watching the, watching it. It was, it was really, really pretty cool.
Pretty cool. We, um, as we had expected and we shared with the commissioners last August.
Beth, I'm sorry.
This is loud enough. That was Carmichael Trumbull County Tourism. As we had talked to the commissioners last August, myself and John Hickey, our expectation was that it would be a last minute decision for a lot of people. I stayed here at the office. I had staff at, um, Mosquito Lake and then at the Eastwood Mall as well as, um, they did a stuff at Skyway. And that's what we found. A lot of people were saying, I met somebody from Washington DC who said, oh, I found you guys on the internet. So, we're like, yay, our marketing is working. And, um, I said, oh, well, how long ago did you plan to come up? And he said, oh, yesterday. He literally was looking yesterday. There were a lot of people that I had come in contact with that just said, we were gonna go to Cleveland, but it sounded too crazy. We weren't gonna go there. I know, um, Samantha out in Mosquito Lake met somebody from Switzerland.
Wow.
Who, um, or Sweden, excuse me, Sweden, who specifically was noting, she, Samantha was the one that built out our landing page for Trumbull Eclipse dot com. And she said that, uh, the woman from Sweden says, I'm here because of that landing page. And so, she was excited to get that feedback because she said it was just clear, concise. It gave all the information I was looking for. Um, I have spoken to people up in Kinsman. They said they saw a lot of people. Um, Mesopotamia saw several, I would say a couple hundred people up there. So, happy that it was a safe event. We, um, talking to the Grand Resort, uh, we found the same thing. Like, the people that were found, uh, the amphitheater, everything was clean. There was like no trash. Um, the resort was talking about how nice and courteous and respectful people were at their, their guests were over this whole experience. So, um, we haven't heard anything. The biggest issue was traffic coming, you know, as we had expected and anticipated. The traffic, uh, leaving, oh, I left at like six thirty last night and I was still hitting traffic on eighty two and Route eleven. So, it seemed like if, um, Commissioner Malloy had said, you know, a lot of people either pre-eclipse or post-eclipse were in a restaurant. They, um, they were eating. Um, I know that Beth's Western here in downtown Warren said that he had thirty five reservations in the last week. So, again, that last minute, oh, A, our weather was great and then B, those last minute people, but we saw many people from Maryland. I don't, you had seen, um, uh, license plates from Virginia.
West Virginia, North Carolina, um, Georgia.
There was somebody from, um, California at the resort. So, and the cool thing for us was, there were people that would never have come to Trumbull County. And so many people said, what a nice community. What a great downtown area. You know, they, they loved being here. So, we were able to introduce our community to a lot of people that hadn't been here before, which was really exciting. We are waiting. We, um, have, we buy a subscription for a platform, a mobile data tracking platform. We'll start to get some results here in the next week or so to see, um, it, you know, what kind of impact it had.
I do know that, uh, hotel capacity was pretty much maxed out and even the... That'll work perfect.
But this is not dry erase, so I don't know how we're gonna figure this out, print on it.
Print on it.
Okay.
Just write on it and have Dean make another one.
Send us the bill.
Yeah, I would, honestly, honestly, oh, okay. I mean, let's, let's just write on that one, give it delivery. They can take it back and hang it in their headquarters or whatever. And then we'll get more.
What are we gonna do about the next one?
We'll, we'll order more. We'll give more business.
Thank you. All right, we'll put your, uh, we'll...
Change the ranking number of your, like, check.
Yeah.
Yeah, just don't mess up on the spelling or anything 'cause we only got one.
Don't put pressure on you.
He said that. He just already said that.
That's what, that's what could happen.
Need a big bottle of light out.
Yeah, big bottle. I just brought that.
Um, anyway, the Hampton Inn yesterday sold the rooms. There was three hundred and sixty nine dollars for a room at the Hampton.
Wow.
Oh, wow.
And it was like that everywhere. I had some friends that were staying in the Cleveland area. Rooms were going from six hundred to nine hundred. They're typically a hundred and seven dollar rooms in Always Sandusky. Um, a lot of people made a lot of money off of this and, and like I said yesterday, when it was done, if you were around Elm Road area, if you're running or in Howland, every restaurant parking lot was full. So, people went out, they saw it and then they saw we got something to eat. They probably shopped at the mall. A lot of those people that came in from out of town, they saw the attractions that we had. So, it was one of those things. We really didn't know what to expect, but, you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty years, you took good notes. If it happens again, we'll know what to expect with the next one. But it was a, it was something, the next one, I think is in twenty one years in the Southern United States. And I think there were people might wanna travel for something like that if they saw it in the seventies and remembered it like that.
Yeah.
That's why I think a lot of people were here, but...
We wanna do it again. We have all these ideas, so we want that. We wanna do it again.
And John Hickey, I mean, he lives for this stuff. Yesterday, he was, his, his office, I mean, he had everything down to the Zoom thing, communicating with the MA Director of some other states. And I mean, as this thing was happening, it was like he was Houston and NASA, you know, coordinating this thing. It was, it was amazing, you know. And he was on the ball with that stuff. I mean, he probably didn't sleep last night. Great job, uh, everybody involved with it and great job that everything happened. And thank you for less, letting the employees go home early.
Oh, yeah.
Every other business in the world. See, even my bank shut down, so, I mean, they were letting employees go home. And so, we, we may have brought awareness by that and although it cost us some money to pay two and a half hours of employees not work, uh, talking about yesterday, I think we more than made up for that just in the awareness of it being in the paper and it being a controversy and people saying, oh, wow, this is, this is on Monday and they read about it. They may have gotten involved with it and maybe that attracted some people here. But I think the kinda hidden return we're gonna see on the tax dollars we made off of it probably is, uh, um, gonna more than cover the expense we had by letting employees go home early.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I know they were happy, so.
Absolutely.
Uh, that's all I had with that. Um, is there anybody else? Casey?
I just have two quick things. I won't be here next week. I leave for vacation and I missed the deadline for this week. Um, Casey McDonough, nine one one director, um, we're looking to purchase, um, annual license to Critical. Um, that's what I told you guys before is about the, um, retention and hiring, um, testing of dispatch candidates. It kind of does, um, online testing. We can do it remotely. So, like if Alex is a candidate, she can take the test at home. We'll get a report. Um, it does personality testing, true north language testing, and basically it will do multitasking and kinda simulate, uh, dispatch. I actually took one online. It was actually pretty neat and does challenge you better than what the skill sets we did have. Um, some agencies that have done it have, um, increased their retention by like sixty percent once they implemented this. It's, uh, six thousand, two hundred and seventy eight dollars a year, uh, for the annual license. So, that'll be on the agenda for next week, but I won't be here to explain it to you, so I just wanted to let you guys know about it. Um, Bill already reviewed the user agreement. It's not a contract. It's just a user agreement and he made suggestions and they updated those. Everything's already been submitted online today. Um, and then the one other thing I have for you guys is just a, uh, letter of recommendation for a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week, which begins Sunday, April fourteenth through the twentieth. I believe he does do this every year. Um, it's pretty standard. Um, so it's, it's TC week, uh, next week, the fourteenth through the twentieth. Unfortunately, I will be on vacation. I never realized I take vacation that same week every year. But, um, I will be golfing with nine girlfriends as well. Everybody else is hopefully working and enjoying work and, and, and not stressing out too much. Um, we did make it through, as you guys said, the eclipse with no issues. Um, thank you for the pizzas that were sent over. Um, we had several people who did rotate out to go see it. Um, it was pretty cool for the, you know, thirty seconds that you get to see the cool ring. Um, so that letter I've sent up to for you guys as well to do that. And I think that is it.
So, that, so that program you think will, I mean, anything's worth a shot and that's a minimal cost, I think, but try to find the right employees to, to get to these jobs?
Unfortunately, it won't bring bodies to us to that class, but, but what it'll do...
No, but I mean, as far as, it'll weed people out if they don't want...
It'll, it'll weed people out who get, you know, two months in and they're like, oh, this is a great...
Yes, that's, that's expensive.
So, what we found is just going through the hiring process and doing the background checks that we do, you know, that, that just costs the time, the burden on the trainers. You know, when you're training multiple people consistently for months on end because you're just constantly rolling them over, what this will hopefully do is it'll get that, you know, one in five candidate who would make a potentially good hire. So, then we can invest our time in them and, and, and save everybody else time.
That's a good idea, yeah, absolutely.
Hopefully, fingers crossed.
Anyone else?
Um, I got a couple more things on here, I suppose. Uh, Tim?
Yes.
Um, still getting feedback on the cameras for our weekly meetings and even this here. Where it kinda looks dark, kinda looks like the beginning of the eclipse or the end, where it isn't real bright on the camera. I don't know if it's a graphics thing or if it's a lighting thing that we have in here. Um, but there are a lot of people that watch the weekly meetings.
Yes.
A lot of people that watch the commissioners' weekly meeting is they have a better feed on her phone. And with her phone not gonna be here next year, we still want the people to be engaged and still not miss a beat and be able to see what's going on. Can we start to really look at what do we need to do to increase the quality of what we have? Like right now, someone told me the other day, they said, I, I watch her feed 'cause your feed is like C-span, you know, nineteen ninety four.
Right.
And we need to do something a little better now. When I look at Austintown or some of the other places that tape their things, it's bright. You can clearly see the, you know, the, the definition is a lot higher resolution.
Right.
And if there's something we can do to tweak these cameras, replace these cameras or something, we, we spent good money on it. But it, it's, if people aren't watching it because it's, it's too boring of a feed thing, then we need to spice that up a little bit.
We can definitely. We, we spoke with the company iVideo about that. They had recommended, gave us several recommendations, including lighting, including the, the paint, uh, on, on that wall. Doing something different with that. Um, they did recommend there are higher end cameras if you want to spend the money on. So, um, that's, there is all possibility. So, if, if we want to investigate spending more money on, on the system, we can. Uh, one of the ideas that we had had was taking one of those cameras that we have there and put it back here in this part of the room to, instead of using that far end camera that's down there now. Um, that's definitely a possibility.
Because maybe the light from that, that...
It's probably, it's helping or hurting, I don't know. It's probably the, the lights in the windows. It's probably even during the regular meetings, it's probably those windows there as well. This, let's face it, this room wasn't designed in the production room. So, it was designed as a meeting room. So, um, there, there are some options of, that we can look at. I've looked at the Austintown meeting. You, you are correct. It is, it is much clearer. Uh, it is also in a smaller room with wood paling in that room. So, um, it's a little bit of a darker room, but it is definitely clear.
If you can look into that and just see what some other options have, I mean, if, if we, we wanna keep the public involved and engaged and...
Correct.
We don't wanna be that boring. I mean, we want to have more boring meetings. Don't get me wrong. I'd like it to be quicker and more business oriented, but, um, if people are gonna take time to watch or follow through, let's make it a better experience for them. Uh, secondly, I had a group reach out to me the other day and I met with them. We've got this Colbert Lake issue that's been brought up to us, uh, regarding the, uh, dam study. And they have a pretty big ask in there, which is in front of, um, the attorney now. Um, there are some other groups that wanna help out. I met with Trumbull County Community Foundation the other day and they said they would be willing to put some money into this thing. So, if it doesn't get approved by Tanya or maybe part of it or whatever, I think we need to reach out to some of these community groups that maybe are more community oriented, non-governmental for private property and, and, I mean, there's a long way to go with that as far as dealing with the owner and, uh, what's gonna happen with it. But it was someone where they reached out and they said, yeah, we can kick some money in. They're, they're sitting on thirteen million dollars in their foundation or something. And they, they said that, that they're based out of Brookfield Hubbard area. And they said, you know, they, they wanna get involved and help it out any way they can. So, we need to, uh, hook them up with the right people and then see what happens with this grant with Tanya and, and then add that as another tool in the box there.
Okay.
Um, tomorrow, the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners is receiving, they get the Spirit of the Valley Award.
Yeah.
For the Chamber of Commerce. It's a breakfast meeting at seven thirty AM at Wake Point, um, Banquet Hall at, at the hotel in Boardman off Western Reserve Road. And they are asking for one commissioner to be there to receive the award in front of their breakfast group. So, I don't know if you wanna arm wrestle, flip a quarter, you know, to come up with some type of, uh, challenge today to figure out who goes.
We got him all covered.
But it's, um, it is tomorrow at seven thirty AM, so one of us has to be there awful early. Um, I guess I don't mind doing it if you want me to do it. If you would like to do it, you've been here longer than me. I'll give you preference if you wanna do it. If not, I will, I'll go ahead and...
If I have the authority, then I'll delegate it to you.
Yeah, you can, you can, you can do that. You can do that. It is in Mahoney County, which is a drive too, so we're talking, I'll just stay up tonight. Drive to my office, leave the chair. But I, I got, I will do that if you want me to do it.
Sure.
Okay.
Tomorrow's hearing, tomorrow's hearing.
Like seven thirty?
I didn't see you, I just see you like you weren't incoming this way at all. I know you got kids to get school and everything else, so. I, I attended the First Valley Vision meeting last week. Um, I think it was on Thursday and we met at East Gate. They had about thirty five people in the room and it was pretty awesome for a start. Uh, we went over it and there was the slideshow and there's presentation and all for the UN Commissioner Franchco to see what I saw when I was there.
Yeah.
Um, it's just a, for educational purpose, you know, thing to see what they, what they're, uh, asking for. Um, as we talked about before, I'll serve as our representative on there. I think, uh, Commissioner Disler is from Mahoney County, although they had all three of their people there at the last meeting. He, it just will be him going forward as they narrow the focus down.
Okay.
Um, the one thing we were lacking was Trumbull County representation. The only other person there from Trumbull County, um, was a gentleman from Bright. And they had asked us to not be outnumbered twenty eight to two, that we think of other organizations from Trumbull County that should sit on the, the Valley Vision panel, um, that, that should have representation. Of course, I, they have Y S U representative there. I think we need to reach out to Kent State Trumbull and find someone from Kent Trumbull um, to, to serve on the panel representing Trumbull County or Trumbull County interests. And we need to look at some of our bigger foundations, some of our bigger groups that are involved in there, um, and see if we can find one or two other people that wanna, would wanna serve on this.
How many more are they looking for?
Well, they don't wanna get too big. They wanna have thirty is what their ultimate goal is, to have no more than thirty. And with that, it's like they asked someone from the Youngstown Foundation, somebody from East Gate, you know, someone from the Port Authority, you know, all the different groups. But then there were a lot of, a lot of foundations that were small that were represented there. And it, it, they serve their purpose. Some of the stuff is gonna be to find those little loopholes to help the homeless and small business and things like that. So, there are, it's a, it's a pretty diverse group. There's some of the groups we kinda weeded out a little bit, um, that, uh, were brought up and we kinda thought, you know, that just doesn't really serve economically. Um, but economically, we gotta look at what interest groups we have here in Trumbull County and find people that, who assist us in serving Trumbull County. So, that's something, uh, just throwing it on the table that next meeting we go to, I'd like to have two or three other Trumbull County interests there with me so that when they're, all the money's distributed equitably and stuff, we have, we have good representation of, of the whole Mahoney Valley.
Maybe even our economic development coordinator and...
That's a possibility. Uh, Beth is another one that I, that I thought would be a good asset, uh, being they serve under her own board, you know, it's, it is kind of a separate entity in a sense. Um, Nick, of course...
Not that Nick's on it on enough boards.
Right, but this, this is something with...
I think it's on my board.
It's on every board. I think Nick's on every board.
After you see the slideshow and you see what, what they're doing and how they're incorporating this thing in the, in the funding structure and stuff, you know, we are a major player. We're a million dollars to the table, as is Mahoney County. So, I wanna make sure we have equal representation when it comes to votes on things too, that, that we are getting our fair share. You know, like you said, maybe one of these Bonmont Avenue people, somebody from Niles, they, they can represent the interest of Niles in the four twenty two corridor. Maybe somebody from Warren, dude, certainly. The mayors of Warren and Youngstown were invited to be part of it and neither of them showed. Um, but this might be something where I, I think the mayor of Niles should be, should be part of it. No, I, if I said Niles, if I said Niles, I was wrong. And Mayor Warren in Youngstown were invited and didn't show. But, uh, I will, I'll be reaching out to some of the other communities and try to put together the best economic team we can have. Uh, and then finally, we have a joint chamber meeting at the end of the month on a Friday. I think it's the twenty fifth.
Yes.
And that is the meeting we attended last year, where you have Mahoney County Commissioners and Trumbull County Commissioners at a Port Authority meeting. I'm sorry, it's Port Authority for this together. They're doing it at Sam Cavalli's office. And, um, they're asking all three of our commissioners to be present, as well as Mahoney, to discuss things in the interest through the Port Authority and their board, things in the interest of combining, of the combined counties. Um, I don't know, last year, I don't remember if we had to notify this thing, anything special or anything, uh, Bill.
I think, I think the, didn't the Port Authority notify, it was their meeting, so they notified the press on their own, didn't they?
Uh, they did, but I just wanna make sure we're legal with all of us being there, participating in this and, and joint with the Mahoney Commissioners. I know they have no problem with it. None of the other commissioners in the world do, but they don't live in Trumbull County and deal with what we deal with on a daily basis. So, I just wanna make sure us going to it, that we are covered. If you can just, look into that a little bit.
Something we have to look into. If you guys could, somebody could shoot me down the email, we can check into what takes for that.
Okay. I just don't want, I mean, I don't wanna rain on that parade. I mean, this is a, a great thing for the valley, a great thing for us, a great thing to, to, to work jointly with other communities and, um, we can't be held hostage.
Yeah, we've done it for years now, that annual meeting with the Port Authority, so that's an issue, but...
We have. And not that we're making decisions there, but there are times when we have discussion and we go around the room and we, you know, we talk on things and they'll be asking for us...
But the public isn't invited, and the press is notified.
They are. But, like you said, we work under different rules there. There's the rules, rules, and then there's the mayhem rules. That's all I have, anybody else have anything for the good?
I'm good, quicker workshop today.
I know that, uh, we do have a meeting here in this room, will be televised again at one o'clock.
At one o'clock, yeah.
And that is a joint meeting with the Warren Township trustees, and our Board of Park Commissioners, Metro Parks, and, uh, interested parties in, in the dam issue in Leavittsburg. Um, capacity in this room, Bill, I don't know how many chairs we have, but anything beyond the chairs we have here, we will have an overflow area that's set up in the, uh, Veterans.
Veterans Building.
Building.
There are where they're, they're ready to go.
Okay, so they got TV there, they got, uh, chairs there for the public.
We're using this setup here?
We're gonna use this setup right here, so their overflow be, I mean, the people.
People, yeah, we can add a lot more chairs back there, um, even more in here.
I think it's best to make sure, because it was brought the other day, that we all sit at at the round table, like, this equals with this thing.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Sure.
To talk about it, and for us to be up on the dais, and then to sit down, I think it's just condescending toward the trustees and the board, this has got to be something where we're all in this thing, as community equal on this, no better than the other ones, and I think by being at a round table like this, just the respect factor and listening to people for the core that needs to discuss what we need to discuss, I feel this is best, and if you concur this way, I'd like to do it.
Yeah, I'm good, yeah. Okay, if there's nothing else, make a motion in the chair.
Motion?
I'll make that motion in a second.
Mr. Council Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.